Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that I am going to hit the record button. This meeting will be recorded from end to end and transcribed as well. All will be available following. Okay. Okay, Mrs. Bernacki?
Good evening, everyone. We are returning from our executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and resume the public session? A motion from Kelly and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. Mr. DeJaco is not here this evening. He could not make it for a personal reason. And so we shall move on. Who we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, we are not having a live public meeting, but we all here know this to be a smoke-free building, and we are aware of where the exits are. We can move to our first approval. I'm looking at the wrong screen. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated August 31st, 2020. Have a motion, please? Bill and a second from Michelle. Any questions, comments, corrections on the minutes? All in favor? That's everybody. We have FYIs on budget appropriation reports for the general school lunch and special aid funds, budget transfers, and revenue status reports. Anybody have anything they want to say about those? Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on September 2nd, 2020. A motion, please? From Xavier and a second from Michelle. All in favor? That's everybody. Okay. Word member communications and announcements? Anybody?
Sure, I'll start out. I wasn't here the last time, and I know that Christine thanked Mr. Polanski for the forums that he held, but I wanted to point out that Ms. Polanski held a forum in the Spanish language in which he actually spoke throughout the entire meeting, and the community was very appreciative. I think you had one of the highest turnouts in that forum. Just wanted to thank you for that effort. You did a great job.
And it was two and a half hours of speaking Spanish, I think.
Yes. He did a great job. Absolutely.
Thank you. Enjoyed it. Really did.
Is that correct?
That was it.
Kelly?
I just wanted to thank the teachers and the staff and the entire administration for an amazing first day. My kids came out personally beaming, and everyone else that I've spoken to, they said the same thing. In my opinion, that's the sole result of the teachers putting on a brave face for the kids, and I'm sure so many of them may have been a little bit anxious and frightened or nervous themselves, but the kids were none the wiser, and they may not have been able to see the smiles, but I know that they were able to feel them and to sense them. And my kids had nothing but good things to say, so I just want to thank everybody for that.
I just wanted to add to that, this is Christine, that I heard from all around the district that they were very respectful and touching 9/11 tributes on Friday, and I just want to reiterate, because even though we're all going through this, we, as a district, took the time to educate the kids and help them reflect on another time when we all really needed to be together and pull together for our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think it's to you, Jim.
Okay. I have a couple of items here to go through. First of all, as Christine alluded, the open meetings law amendment has been extended to include this meeting, which allows us to run the virtual process. The executive order that extended that amendment, I believe expires on October 4th, which is the day before our next meeting. I do anticipate that it may be extended again, but he has been waiting, he being the state executive, has been waiting until the last minute to do so. So there will be probably a posting that allows us to move in either direction if we need to. At this point, there is only a limited number of people we can invite into the facility, and I don't really want to be in a position where I have to cut people off at some point, so this is certainly a much better option. Little bit of an update on where we are financially. We are still waiting for some sort of federal help here, and there is a stalemate, federal, state. This is political. This is not necessarily anywhere near 100% pandemic-related, but unless we get some federal assistance, I don't imagine that the state aid situation is going to improve any further. So we are still looking down the throat of a 20% cut across every different state aid, school aid category. One of the things that did happen over the past couple of days, if not week or two weeks, there was an injunction filed against the interim rule that would require us to give a portion of our state aid, our CARES Act funding, to any private or parochial schools in the district. There was, at first, an order pertaining to a couple of states in the country, and then the rule was thrown out altogether. So we no longer are required to provide any of our aid to outside institutions, so that's about $85,000 that will remain with us, and we can use every penny that we can get at this point.
If that's a final order, or that's something?
It's done.
Okay.
It's done. We did complete our application ready for the CARES Act funding. That included that piece going elsewhere, and the last communication we received from the State Education Department is that application will be amended. We will probably have to do it, but that's fine. It's just a matter of removing that piece of it, and that money will come back to the district where it should be. Financially, this is a tough time for all districts, and that's no secret. We did get our first hint of what next year's budgeting process is going to look like with a jump in the, I believe you saw this in your update, a jump in the ERS, the Employee Retirement System employer contribution rate. That's the first time that has jumped like that in some time. This is to make up for lost income, lost revenue as a result of the pandemic. So we are going to be facing that with TRS, with ERS, with a lot of other things that, unfortunately, are going to impact our ability to gather revenue for 21, 22 at this point. And we're still questioning a lot of what we're getting in 2021, because there is the unknown. We are now in a place where we're not receiving our full collections of state aid, primarily because there is a shortage at the state level, which, again, they're waiting on a federal act to bail us out. Couple of things just up. It's time to start talking positives. I know we've certainly had some positives throughout this. I am pleased to share that a couple of years ago, actually for several years consecutively, one of our primary schools was highlighted by the Better Research Institute, the organization that highlights schools that have closed achievement gaps, that have done incredible things with their students in poverty and under economically served subgroups. Jefferson has been acknowledged for several years consecutively, and this year, the high school was acknowledged for its progress in that regard, so pleased to share that. And that comes in line with Ms. Alamea. Our guidance director shared the AP scholar outcomes, and despite all of the craziness that went on with AP exams last year, I did share with you, or is it in this week's update, the AP scholar numbers jumped and representing all segments of our school community, which is really nice to see.
A lot of times, kids get that acknowledgement after they graduate, right?
It's possible, because it is based on their final exams, and if they're taking AP exams when they're seniors, they're not going to see it until they're done. Same thing with their AP scores if they're seniors, so. Okay, a couple of other things. The board graciously came in on Tuesday night before school opened to walk through our facilities, which look a little bit different. I'd also like to thank, as many of you did already, our staff across the board, our teachers, our administrators, our custodial staff, our clerical, our nurses, our AMAs, our food service workers. I mean, there's nobody here that did not contribute to a successful reopening. It's going to take some time here, but we couldn't do this without every cog in the wheel, and I'd just like to say thank you once again to our staff across the board, who have been in collaboration in terms of just saying, what more can I do to give a hand here? And this is what Huntington is all about and always has been, so thank you to all of them. As mentioned, and I did highlight this on our social media platforms this morning, on our Facebook page, the United States Department of Agriculture extended that federal waiver that allows us to take the program that we had in place last spring and extend it at least until the end of the calendar year. So it is important for us to basically make sure that our kids are well-fed. We do need to prepare these meals and distribute them to make sure we get the full funding in return. So reminders that our grab-and-go is open. It is at the high school, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, from 10:00 to 12:30, and at Jack Abrams from 1:00 to 2:30. Every day, school is open, and you can pick up multiple meals during any one visit, so please do not hesitate. We are here to make sure that everybody is well-fed, as well as well-educated. The state has instituted, and there has been a lot of discussion about this, a COVID testing dashboard. We're on a daily basis. I started, and Joanne has picked it up. We'll be inputting data from every one of our buildings in terms of any positive tests and more than that, and that will be feeding a report card through which anyone, anywhere, can drop down and pick a school and see what's happening in that school. Unfortunately, there have been instances across Long Island and across the state where positive tests have been surfacing, and this is going to happen. It's going to happen throughout this period of time until we get to the end of this, so it's not unexpected. I don't want anybody to be surprised by it. If it happens here, we're going to do everything we can to prevent it, but there are some things we just can't protect.
Had I not read that that dashboard had not opened yet?
It looks like there's a new site, the site that they initially put forth as the dashboard, still has nothing on it, but there is a school report card site that seems to be active. I will share that with the board.
Because Miss La sent out a thing, and it said that I thought it was.
There are multiple sites, and it's by far, we're organized, they're not. I'm going to come out and say it.
It's more like a coming soon.
That's what it said, and then all of a sudden.
They don't have enough data yet, really, to build it.
It's true, but the new site, which came out of nowhere, does have the data, so if you click on Huntington School District, it'll show you the data that we input over the past few days. And there are different opening dates for school districts, so it's only going to reflect when schools are open. The State Education Department also put forth an opportunity for school districts, and I mentioned this to a couple of people, it's called a snow day pilot. So if a school district chooses to do so, they have the option of flipping the switch to remote on any upcoming snow day during the winter season and not lose the day and have to reclaim a day on a calendar later in the spring. So that's something we are currently discussing, and obviously, the board will be a part of that. Transportation, I'd like to thank Chris Hender. I'd like to thank Judith Murphy and all in the transportation office and Huntington Coach. It's been the smoothest transportation opening. We are transporting fewer kids on a given day, but it has been a seamless process, and we have a lot to be thankful for in terms of how we were routed and just how this whole process was set up. Driver education, I know we are working, and people have been asking questions about that. We are working on finalizing the documents so that Georgia McCarthy can get the spring completed and the fall set up, and the big change is the driving school will not be involved. Parents would be submitting documents and supervising the driving for their own children.
And there's nothing people need to do for that yet, just hold tight?
Just hold tight. Georgia will be in contact. We're just waiting for the, she has been in touch with many people. We're just waiting for the documents to be finalized by legal, and then we'll be ready to go. But we have, on tonight's agenda, we have the instructors, the in-house lecture instructors are on the agenda so that we can get them going.
Well, I mean, as far as registering new kids.
She'll take care of that.
Yep.
A couple of other exciting announcements. I think I made this last week, but we have two scholar artists. I'm not going to go into that again, but we have one who will be featured, that's Juliet Marinello, will be featured in the October edition. She's an actual scholar artist. And Joanna Campos is award of merit media arts. And I don't know if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the Long Island Music Hall of Fame honored 10 students islandwide, and Jose Suarez, who is now up at Syracuse University, I hope he's still up there, I think they're still running. But he was honored, a terrific trumpet player and just a terrific young man. He was honored as one of those 10 from across Long Island. And we found out not too long ago that Andreas Seferian, Seferian is a senior, he was national, he qualified in the National Merit qualifying.
Semi-finalist.
Round of events there, and he just qualified as a National Merit semi-finalist, which is among the highest honors that a student in high school can attain. So we're very proud of him. Congratulations to Andreas. And I know that there are quite a few questions and feelings about recent decision made by the Section 11 organization, which is the governing body of Suffolk County Athletics. I figured before we get into the meat and potatoes of the meeting, I'd just share some of the discussion items that have been brought to the surface during conversations with superintendents and during recent Section 11 meetings. So just to start off the conversation, and anybody who thinks otherwise is just incorrect, that anybody wants to see something like athletics not take place or have our kids not on the field. There have been some comments that suggest that is what people want, and I think those are feelings of emotion at this point, that is far from what anybody wants to see or experience at this point. It was a 41-page guidance document put out by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. I'm going to say two weeks ago at most, and that document is quite lengthy. It does address the low-risk and high-risk, or low-risk, medium-risk, high-risk sports as classified by the governor on somewhat of a whim. That document clearly, very clearly places the responsibility on schools to implement and execute, et cetera. And there is a lot that goes along with that in terms of responsibility. I know people are not happy with the postponement. I'm not happy with it either. It's not a cancellation, it is a postponement. But this was discussed as among one of the most possible ways to get in three seasons to start in January, and it would be a truncated season for fall, winter, and spring. It would start with winter and would also include the four modified seasons. There are obviously no guarantees, but my hope, as it is, the hope of many others, to get those seasons underway and to start preparing for them as soon as possible. But this is a means through which to get them all in. If we start and stop, that season is gone, and that was taken into account as well. And just understanding, and I know you can cite youth sports, you can cite things that are happening, those have not happened without shortcoming and without cases occurring. But the overriding concern is the health and safety of our student athletes, our coaches, officials, staff members, supervisors. There is guidance out there that suggests that aerobic athletic activity 12 feet is the guideline. I know the governor made a change to that, but the bottom line is we can't engage in certain activities in phys ed class within 12 feet. The team sports were a hot topic, primarily because there's no way you can guarantee any form of social distancing playing soccer or field hockey. And then you come to the individual sports, which they were concerned about as well. If you were just going to run those alone, that it would draw students from the other sports and take opportunities away, as well as make them available, leading to all sorts of inequities. And among the thoughts that were presented, well, if you leave this to the individual districts to decide, you're going to have haves and have-nots, and this really should be a county-wide decision. And again, this is not pleasant, but it's something that we have to respect and deal with. Transportation is an issue. Many districts don't have the extracurricular transportation available. We don't have extra buses available at this point typically, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. If we were to add a route, it would be frowned upon by our transportation company, because they just don't have the buses to spare. So they've asked us to be very careful in terms of what we ask for, because they may not be able to provide it, and that includes a good chunk of what we would typically do on an extracurricular basis. Facilities are also an issue. We don't have locker rooms or lockers in use anywhere in our buildings, and that is the case for the vast majority of, or at least the majority of, schools across Suffolk County. And I will tell you that Dr. Ackers sent an email to our staff today, making sure that they understand that they've got to be out of the building within a certain period of time after the school day ends, because it is taking our custodial staff a good deal of time to clean. They're working into the wee hours exceptionally hard. They've got to clean all those shields, they've got to clean every desk, they've got to scrub it down, they've got to make sure that everything is clean, disinfected, sanitized before the next day begins, and it is taking time, so we really don't have the means to allow people using the building after a certain time. And then there's all the other logistics that kick in in terms of screening, and, you know, if we did run sports, how we address issues related to social distancing and spectators, et cetera. So there were so many things on the table. This was not an easy decision, and it is not one that anybody wants to have made or have been, or have imposed upon them. But at this point in time, focusing on reopening, we are hoping that we can get our sports rolling by the January 4th start date. And I'll leave it at that, unless you have questions.
Does anybody have a question about that?
Thank you, Jim.
That was a very thorough explanation. Of course, my screen went off while you were talking. Okay, so that brings us to our first public commentary.
Okay, hang on a second. I've got to get my participant screen up.
Well, I have my little talk to do while you do that.
Okay, go ahead.
So the first public commentary should first address any items for discussion and action tonight. Those are our Board of Education goals. If time remains of the 30 minutes that we usually allot for public commentary, you may address other issues. You have three minutes to speak. It's not really a discussion and answer, unless it's a quick answer that Mr. Polanski can and decides to give. And please state your affiliation with the district as a parent, student, community member, staff member, faculty member, before you begin to speak. If you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand under participants in the call. You can raise your hand.
Okay, Mr. Landers, my volume was up, at about 50% the whole time. That should not impact, correct?
No, I just want to verify, you go to your end meeting. I want to verify the proper word was a lot different before we were trying to follow down there.
The audio was fine up to this point? Okay.
This appears in the meeting, follow the top.
Mm-hmm.
And just if the, the hour down right next to the east, and select the press and speaker clear phone.
Okay, thank you.
So once again, if you want to speak, please raise your electronic hand. I see one so far.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to, this is Stacy, I'm going to unmute you.
So Stacy, please.
Wait, I lost her.
Oh. Did you change your mind?
Yeah, she disappeared altogether. Oh, she's back.
Okay. Just state your name and affiliation to the district, once you're unmuted.
My name is Stacy. I am a parent in the district.
Stacy, could you give us your last name, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you give us your last name?
Smalling. Stacy Smalling. I have two kids in the district. I just want to first say, everybody has been doing a wonderful job. I've heard the teachers online with my kids. It's amazing. It's, you know, an unknown thing, but I just was wondering, my kids have gone already, their cohort is gone. It seems to me that one of the classes, my daughter was the only one in class. I know everybody has a right to choose, but is there a timeline as to when you may revisit and recount the numbers? Because speaking with other parents in the district, their kids are saying there's only five in the class, and I'm talking about middle and high school. You know, to be able to bring the kids to go more, because I feel, even though the teachers are doing an unbelievable job, children don't gain the same academic stuff that they do when they're actually in the classroom with the teachers. I find it so much harder. So I just was wondering, at what point would you maybe then revisit to see if you can increase the days from just one maybe to two? If the numbers stay that the way that they are, is there a possibility to do that sooner than later?
Okay, it's certainly a valid question. I'll answer it to the best of my ability at this point. You answered part of it in terms of the metrics. We'll be, it's only four days in at this point. We're going to be watching what happens regionally, we're going to be watching what happens in the local community in terms of the percent of positive test cases. There have been cases popping up at other schools. Typically, it takes about two weeks or possibly a little bit less for this virus to incubate and for symptoms to be demonstrated, and that could lead to, and we hope it doesn't, could lead to an increase in cases. It may not, and that's what we're looking for, number one. I have to say, to the kids' credit in this district, they really, they understand the importance of the social distancing, the mask-wearing, just following direction in terms of keeping themselves and staff and each other safe, and that was a big part of it as well. We wanted to make sure that we were able to implement our safety protocol with fidelity, and that seems to be working well, so that will factor in as well. I want nothing more than everybody back. I can't give you an exact date, timeline, but if things continue as they are in terms of low percentage, low percentage positive tests, the students and staff continue to work through our safety protocol with fidelity, and we are in a place where we still have a good number of people who still are interested in that fully virtual, we may be able to do this more sooner than later. I just can't put an exact date on it at this point.
Can I follow up with a question? So is it possible, you've said this before, but I'm just reiterating, it would be possible for perhaps secondary to move forward, you know, without moving to phase two at the lower grades?
There's no lock-in for anything. So if the secondary right now has the four cohorts as opposed to the two at the elementary level, that may be the first thing that we consider doing, just based on the smaller class size at the secondary level. There will be things that would be compromised with half the students in, and that's based on class sizes at this point. There may be a handful of classes where the full social distancing six feet apart is not entirely possible, once we go to that 50% ratio at the secondary level. And we want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves, or ourselves, meaning our school community, our students, staff, et cetera, at risk by doing that. That would not be, that would probably be the, I'm not going to say it would be the exception, but it would not be across the board in every classroom, but some classes would be more impacted in that respect than others.
Sure.
That's a valid question, and thank you for asking it, Mrs. Smalling. It was a good time to bring it up.
Okay, do we have any other, I don't see any other hands.
Okay, we'll have another.
All right, so there's another opportunity at the end, but for right now, we are going to move. You all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, to our items for discussion and action, which are our Board of Education goals. So let me just load it. Okay. Do we want to discuss it first and then decide if we're doing a motion, or do we want to do a motion?
You can make the motion, and then.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board adopt the attached goals for the school district for the school year 2020, 2021. I have a motion. Linda and a second from Kelly. Okay.
So this reflects, I believe, everything we discussed at the last meeting, adjustments made?
And I just want to say that Mr. DeJaco did say that all of his comments, he felt, had been incorporated into these goals, so he didn't have anything further to add to these. But if we don't mind, I'd like to start with Xavier, since you weren't here.
Sure.
To give you a chance first to speak, since you didn't have a chance.
First of all, I think you did a great job in incorporating the goals that we are needed for this coming year. I don't really think I'm going to suggest any changes to it. I'm just going to kind of talk about the spirit of some of what I believe these goals should encompass, for example, two and five. When we talk about the learning loss, I'm assuming we also discuss family loss in that a lot of our students have lost family, and they are, I'm sure, having a difficult time coping with that. So I'm assuming we will be dealing with that as well. Number three, the environment designed to meet the needs of individual learners with a diverse school community. I'd like, I've always liked that we were culturally responsive, and we reach out to opportunities that present us in our district. For example, ATH Life, I know you've been talking to the gentleman that runs ATH Life and some opportunities that they can provide for us, as well as Cold Spring Harbor Laboratories, laboratories. They have reached out to us with various opportunities, and I know that we have a relationship with them, and we can possibly continue to develop and foster other opportunities with them. And then number seven, I know that's one that I've always found to be important to our district in upholding consideration. I wish that maybe we can take a step further in what we do there, and maybe honing our hiring practices, maybe our hiring committees reflect more of what this goal really consists of. And I know that may not be up to you, but maybe our teachers or the union leaders can hear what that really means, and they help to further this goal along, because it's not just up to us. But I did hear what everybody had to say in the last round of these goals, and I concur in a majority, if not everything that was said at the last meeting. and, and I, I concur in a majority, if not everything that, that was said at the last meeting.
Okay.
So these are all ongoing. Um, and I think as we discussed last year, the, the focus is on things that we, not things that are continuous from year to year, but things that we're really going to focus on, at least in part, in a new way in, in 2020, 2021. Unfortunately, the pandemic is a part of that, but, uh, just to address a couple of things that Xavier mentioned, uh, the social emotional needs are first, and they're listed first and number two for a reason, and that would encompass individualizing as best we can, uh, understanding that different families have had different experiences with this and some more tragic than others. Um, number three is definitely going to be ongoing, and there are going to be specific things that come up with respect to that every year and, and some of the conversations we've had with people internally. And some of the conversations that, uh, that we've had with people on the outside of the organization have been very helpful. Um, you know, one of the things that has come up is possibility of looking at, at somebody, if not this year, moving forward, uh, to occupy a position where they would be solely focused on diversity and inclusivity. And, and I think that is, uh, a place where some of the larger city districts are going, but I think it's a place where, where some of the small, um, not that we're a small district, but some, some of the more local districts are, are, are going to head as well. And I would certainly be open to putting somebody or somebodies in, in, uh, in a situation to help us in that respect on the inside.
Something that a lot of universities are doing as well.
Absolutely. I think it's a very important piece of, of how to move forward here. Um, and number seven, we've, we've made some, some, I, I, my hope is that everybody understands the importance of, of there being a, of representation across the district. That really means a, a great deal to our, our students and our school community. And, uh, and we've got great folks here, and I think we, we also brought in a, a new core this summer. Uh, we're going to continue looking at, uh, at the bigger picture here for sure. But thank you for that.
Does anybody else have anything further to add on them? I think, I, I think you did a great job incorporating so many different comments that we had last time.
My concern is always the number of goals. It's, it's hard to focus, and this, this is definitely pared down from last year. So I think eight is a, I think we had, uh, 12 or 13 last year. Uh, this is a unique year, so everything that we do is going to be in the context to a certain degree of that, uh.
Focus. Focus, yeah.
That pandemic that is still circulating, so.
And, and the resources being pulled in, in to different, a different direction than was expected.
So it's a tough fiscal time, and, and I think everybody's well aware of that. And the unknown is as difficult and challenging as the challenges themselves.
Well, fiscal resources, but also even just time resources.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I have a question that's related to number one, not the, the goal is fine, but, um, looking beyond that, when, um, we're looking at the, the plan, obviously it's, it's changing and we're flexible. Um, is there a, a process for like evaluating how things are going with respect to the remote learning, the, what's going on in the classroom? Is there, is it more informal or is there like a formal process where that, the subcommittee or the committees are still talking at certain points?
What it's called is gathering feedback from all involved. So that's gathering feedback from students, gathering feedback from parents, gathering feedback, much like Mrs. Smalling mentioned tonight. I completely understand and, and, uh, agree with many parts of what she's saying, but it's, it's, it's a matter of what we have in place. Is it, is it working to expectations? And then do we have opportunities to move beyond that? Um, but we've, we've, we've got to take the feedback that we gather from everybody who plays a role in the school community very seriously, and includes the staff as well. Because they are, uh, teachers are on the front lines with the technology in hand, and we want to make sure that they are able to reach every child that's in front of them and behind them. And that's, we, we understand the challenge there. They have met it. They continue to meet it. Uh, but what we can do to make their experience easier is only going to impact the kids in a positive way. So it's, it's a matter of, like I said, gathering feedback from all involved, staff, students, families, et cetera.
Thank you.
There's no assessment out there that's, that's, that's going to tell us where we are at this point. It's going to have to be.
Constant.
Hands-on assessment, yes.
Right, right, making adjustments.
No test, what I mean. You know, it's not, there's no formal battery that's going to give us any information here. It's got to be through observation and through feedback.
Just attendance-wise, though, do we know, do we know how attendance has been remotely in?
I'm watching the, uh, that I can see more objectively because the attendance messages that go out every day, I get a receipt from each building, so it, it's, it looks good. Um, and just understanding that, uh, if a child is at home and engaged, even though that would have been one of their, their in-school days, if they're on home, online, doing what they're, they're assigned to do, they would be present. So it does provide families with a little bit more flexibility in that respect as well, and that may impact on a positive basis.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I see what you're saying. Like a child that might not be able to get themselves to school at a reg- unregular times would be able to get themselves to.
Because if a child's a little under the weather or has answered one of those questions yes and can't come to school, they can still be present by engaging online despite whether or not, uh, despite, uh, their, their model of choice, what day of cohort.
And/or that emotional factor, or you missed the bus and you have no way to get to school. I know that happens a lot, um.
If there is a silver lining here, there is flexibility involved.
Okay. Anything else on the goals? Oh, this was like the most painless goal thing we've ever done.
You didn't too? Usually.
Yeah, and it's usually hideous. I don't know. Must be the pandemic.
Good job.
I think it's a.
Vote away.
I think our silence is a, a vote of confidence in Jim's authoring capabilities.
Okay, so let's have that vote of confidence now, all we gave up. And that is everybody. Thank you for giving me the words, Bill. Okay, so that.
When we get to the business items, we're going to have to take one out.
Just, just, just say the one.
You want to tell?
Which one?
Number two.
Number two?
I'm sorry, number two under L2.
L2?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yep, got it. Okay. Understood.
Oh, right, and we did the other one last time when you weren't here.
That wasn't here yet.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so that brings us to.
All right, so Jim, when I do it, make sure I can see L all the way. Thank you.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approves CSE CPSC submissions as delineated. Okay, do I have a motion? That's from Bill, and a second from Linda. All in favor? So you raising a hand? That's it. And that brings back to you.
Okay, I am asking the Board for approval of personnel items in schedules three, five, eight, 10, 13, 16, 20, and 22.
Okay, do I have a motion for personnel? Michelle, and a second from Kelly. All in favor? Let's, everybody. I can't see you behind.
I'm doing it for the camera. If I raise here, you can't, the camera can't see it.
Okay. Ah!
Kind of.
Bringing back memories of my childhood. Okay. Brings us to Dr.
Couple of, couple of quick announcements, just some people that are, uh, with us, uh, for a good period of time to start the year and possibly longer. Uh, we have, joining us at Jefferson on the elementary platform, Ellie Chan, joining us in the English department at the high school, uh, Nicole Dubois Grabkowitz, joining us as an Italian teacher for a period of time, Angela Gunsel, not speaking in the microphone, and joining us at the elementary level at Washington, Ashley Pimentel.
Great, welcome, everybody.
Welcome to all four of, of these, uh, fine young educators.
Okay, and that brings us to Dr. Akers. Okay, so, um, it's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve items I through L1, L3 through L7, and items M through P on this evening's business agenda. All right, do I have a motion for those items? That's Linda, and a second from Xavier. All in, any questions? All right, all in favor? That's everybody.
Uh, before you go, just in the interest of full disclosure, um, L4 is a contract with SEO, Family of Services, Madonna Heights. I have no financial gain in that, but I want everyone to know that my wife doesn't work there.
Thank you.
I should have picked that up myself. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Okay, it's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve item L2 on this evening's business agenda.
Did you approve the others yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. Okay, and I have a motion from Michelle, and a second from Linda. Any questions? All in favor? That's everyone, but Xavier.
You abstained, yep.
And then you have a donation to announce.
The Suffolk County School Superintendents Association would like to donate, or have donated, 100 KN95 masks, eight thermo- true thermometers, and 20 bottles of hand sanitizers to the Huntington Union Fiscal District. We thank them for it. It's a, at a value of $640.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, and that brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply as the first, except you may speak on any subject. I forgot to mention that you shouldn't mention the people by names, personnel, or, uh, students. So do we have anybody raising their electronic hand?
Okay, I cleared the hands, so raise them now. Okay.
I can't see what it says on the news. Oh, okay, so Megan, when, just identify yourself fully.
Okay, hang on, I got to mute her first. Okay, Megan, you're on. Yes, just identify yourself and then post your question.
So my name is Megan Canarium. I have, uh, two sons that are currently at the high school. And my question is, um, related to the Section 11 decision. Um, I just know that there are a lot of senior athletes in other parts of New York and across the country that are being recruited over our students. Um, as a student athlete myself that graduated from Huntington, I know that sports are as important as math and other subjects for some students when it comes to getting admitted to college. Um, your goals just showed that you're focused on students', social, and emotional needs, and learning loss resulted from this. Is there going to be any sort of, um, focus on how this Section 11 decision is going to impact these, especially these seniors that are losing this fall season where there should be recruited and looked at? Oh, and right now. I, I mean, I know they're going to get their season in March, but at that point, it's kind of a done deal.
I can only share with you what I've already shared before that, and you mentioned it, that the seasons are going to be delayed. Uh, I, I understand that there are some students who are looking at recruiting, looking at, at scholarships, and understanding that this is impacting students across, not just in Section 11, but across the state. In many sections, I can't speak to all of them. There are actually 11 sections in New York State, but I can tell you that, uh, uh, this obviously impacts both Section 8 Nassau, Section 11 Suffolk. And obviously, we're going to have conversations locally as to what we can and what we can't do, but we do need to adhere to the guidelines set forth by Section 11. And I, I imagine the New York State Public High School Association is going to add clarification as well in terms of what we can and can't do with, with some of the sports that were moved into the later end, i.e. football and volleyball. Uh, but there were some, some major concerns about starting team sports at this point that couldn't be navigated or negotiated through. So we're going to do the best we can. That's, uh, about as, as far as I can, I can take it at this point. And if there's something we can do locally, we will.
Do we know what other sections voted?
I don't have a full list. I know that there was, uh, Section 3 was the one I shared, and they have 58% of their districts participating, 42 not participating. And that was one of the things that, that I know eighth and 11 were trying to avoid in terms of, um, selectivity and haves and have nots.
How many sections are there?
11.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Jim, if I can suggest, there was a, a show that I watched where parents were putting together recruitment videos for their kids, highlighting some of their skills, like how fast they can run, how quick they can jump, how quick they can react. It's something that maybe we can consider in helping out some of our students, putting, putting together some recruitment videos to send to some of the colleges that, that they're, they're interested in.
And I, I can't, I think it's a great idea. And I can't speak to every college, university. I can't speak to every athletic, I mean, colleges have canceled sports as well in, in many of the conferences across the country. So one of the things I would have to assume is that the post-secondary institutions understand the difficulties that we're facing and the decisions that, that have been either made or imposed that impact our student athletes. So I, I can only, I'm making an assumption here. It is not fact that, um, that many of these institutions understand what these, what these young people are going through right now and have to take action in response and make some concessions to allow them, uh, to do things that they may not have under typical circumstances.
And that will affect the college's abilities to offer scholarships in general if they're not sure of the fate of their own athletic programs or for next season.
Absolutely. And the last thing we want to see is any students missing out. But the, the fact is, you know, we are in this as, as a much broader community than one school district. And like I said, this is impacting schools across New York State. I, I know there are some states that may be treating this differently, but I know a lot of the northeast, eastern states are in a, a similar position to New York.
Do we have any other questions, comments? Doesn't have to be a question, could be a comment. Should have clarified. It's public commentary, not public questions. Oh, looks like not. All right, then. Then do we have any final comments by board members? So quiet tonight?
Uh, I'll just, I would just like to, uh, kind of back up what, uh, Kelly said earlier and, uh, thank our staff for a very unconventional start to the school year and all their efforts, and wish them godspeed in settling into a good routine where they can develop some good constructive routines, relationships with their students so that we can try to educate our kids in a very new and different kind of way. So thank you, teachers, and good luck.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, then do I have a motion to adjourn? Somebody, Michelle, and Xavier, all in favor? Everybody, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.